I mean, you were gonna tell me, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's because we're hooked up to that. It's having to go to the. Oh, no, that's not what I wanted to.
Welcome everyone to the Arlington Committee of One Hundred's program for the C day, uh which consists of two, one for candidates for the Arlington School Board. And the second forum is for the candidates for Arlington County Board, which that forum will follow this. Uh my name is Jerry Lord. I'm the Chair of the Arlington Committee of One Hundred for the current year. Uh this is our first in-person event since March of twenty twenty. We're glad to be back with what they call a hybrid program, which combines the in-person format here at the Lover Run Community Center with availability on Zoom and Facebook Live. Uh we're hoping to be able to produce one of these type of events in the future for all people who are interested in our programs. Uh in Facebook Live, I have been to think this is something your friends would like to watch. Please consider sharing your Facebook Live, your page. Uh I want to start by welcoming, I think we have one elected official here, Patrick Ho. I want to recognize him. If we missed, if I missed, if we missed any elected officials, if there are any elected officials who are listening online, uh please either raise your hand here or uh write a note in the Q and A box online and we'll try to recognize you later in the program. Uh before we start, I'd like to thank Tony Bieber and John Bystad, who are members of Arlington Committee of One Hundred's Program Committee for all they did in organizing this program. That's been quite a feat uh with the the hybrid program and the uh dual format and the the new venue. We're going to conduct the school board candidate forum first, uh because as I said, one of the candidates has to leave at seven P M. Both forums will have the same format with two-minute opening statements, followed by the opportunity for each candidate to ask questions of their fellow candidates. Uh the orders of the opening statements was determined in a random drawing just a few minutes ago. Confirm that, Tony, that you have the. You know, though, okay. Okay, great. Um the moderator will then post questions to candidates from the audience. Each candidate will have no more than one and a half minutes to answer each question. Um the Q and A period will be followed by one-minute closing statements from each of the candidates in the reverse order of their opening statements. We've gotten several questions before the the program uh online and the people who are here at Love and Run Community Center had an opportunity to fill out question sheets on their way in. Uh if you're participating on Zoom, you have a Q and A. If you have a question, uh use the Q and A box on Zoom to submit your questions. The two candidates for Arlington School Board uh who who will be on the ballot are with us tonight. They are James Bell Rivas and Bethany Sutton. I'll let them introduce themselves during the remarks. As our moderator for the forums, we're pleased to have Teo Armus, the Washington Post's local politics reporter for Arlington and Alexandria for the past year and a half or so. I'm sure many of you have read many of the great articles that Teo has been uh publishing in the Post over the last year and a half. And we're probably glad to see what he looks like in person. Teo is a graduate of Columbia University with a V A in Urban Studies. I had to do a double take. I assume that he had a degree from the Columbia University, prestigious Columbia University School of Journalism, but that's a graduate school only. Um so he's a urban studies guy, but he's already uh shown, I guess, demonstrated that you don't need a graduate degree from the prestigious Columbia School of Journalism to rise to the top of your profession. Uh Teo was previous, previously a reporter for the Charlotte Observer, where he wrote about race and immigration. Uh he also worked at NBC News and at the Texas Tribune Tribune of Austin, Texas, um before working for the Post. Uh Teo, take it away.
Great. Um, all right. Uh well, we will get started about school word candidates. Our member can now make uh opening remarks. Uh you each have two minutes.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm so pleased to be here this evening and thank you to the committee of a hundred for hosting this forum. Uh my name is Bethany Sutton. I'm candidate for school board. I have been an Arlingtonian for twenty-one years, an active community leader for more than a decade. And my professional background is in higher education and leadership development. My kids currently attend middle school and high school in APS. And I serve right now as the Chair of the Advisory Council on Teaching and Learning, which I've been involved with for the past four years. I actually have today said this evening, um as we are holding our first in-person meeting of the Advisory Council on Teaching and Learning since February of twenty twenty. Um and I thought it would be interesting to know that the topic on the agenda for this evening at ACTL is to talk about school climate and culture. Because I think it's really important for us to talk about um with our community about the environment within which students will achieve their best academic outcomes. Um so I have served as a P T A resident and board member for seven years. I'm a member of the Columbia Plank Community Advisory Council in the Arlington County Community Security Task Force. And since March of twenty twenty, I have served as coordinator for the Randolph Elementary School Food Pantry, which has been a grassroots, community-based effort to feed kids and their families during the pandemic. I care tremendously about student learning, about the mental, emotional, and physical health of our students and staff, and about having an inclusive environment in our school system in which everyone feels that they belong. As the pandemic recedes, we have an opportunity to rebuild community in Arlington. And I believe that the APS leadership and board have a responsibility to foster an environment of trust, transparency, and clear communication. As always, matters of school safety, budget, and effective planning are also pretty important for this school. I believe we have great schools in Arlington. I believe in the value of public education. It would be my pleasure to have the opportunity to serve those.
Good evening. I'm James Bell Reeves, and I've lived in Arlington twenty-three years. My wife Carmen and I have two children at Wakefield High School and Gossett Middle School. Out of position, I completed internship in internal medicine and residency in psychiatry. My residency was at Johns Hopkins Hospital in Baltimore. I'm a member of the APS School Health Advisory Board, and I served as co-chair last year. And I've proudly served as a county election officer for the past six years. But this year I'm running for school board because this is a crucial time for Arlington Public Schools, and we have to get back on track. My top priority is to keep our students and staff physically safe. We need to bring our school resource officers back. That's our school-based police. Second, I want to keep classrooms open for in-person instruction, whatever that takes. And third, we have to finish up making the making up for lost learning from the pandemic. We've got a lot of ground to recover and we've got to keep our expectations high academically. We've got to work to retain our excellent teachers. We've lost too many good teachers in the past two years. I want every student to get the help they need to reach their full potential, whether that's tutoring, academic coaching, transportation, family support. It's going to be hard. I think my experience as a parent, physician, and mental health professional will bring the perspective that we need to the board to meet these challenges. My website is reebsforusd.com.
Uh all right, now you're each going to have the opportunity to uh move the question to another person. Uh we have a one and a half minutes, we'll give you time to pose a question, and then you'll have a one and a half minutes to answer. And then we'll repeat uh the question. I'm about to one hundred minutes.
I asked.
Yes.
Okay. 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 I can do this maybe in five seconds. Um so I would love to just um ask you to speak to what you view as APS' greatest strength.
So many to choose from. Um the students that make up APS uh are excellent teachers that have been so adaptable and nimble through the past two years in hybrid education. Um they've really put up with a lot of curveballs. It's an understatement. Um I think that's uh the community we have in our schools, it's uh you can really feel the school spirit, um even in the middle of elementary schools. I was not used to that growing up. That was high school. Arlington Public Schools, um each school that I have been able to visit or that my kids have um really felt part of their school, and the kids uh support each other for the most part. And uh there is nowhere that I would rather have my kids in Arlington Public Schools. Uh it's an excellent education. I want to make sure that we keep it that way and particularly academically. That's um that has been a stream. I'm afraid of losing this, so. Um I know it's. Bethany, if you're elected to the school board, what will you bring to the board that we don't have currently?
So, uh what will I bring to the board that we don't have currently? Um, you know, I think each school board member has unique qualities and characteristics, things they care about, background, um and the kinds of things that they have done to the community. I am currently an APS parent. Uh my kids attended the Title One Elementary School. I think that uh the background that I have in higher education and and leadership development um would be an asset to the board. Uh I'm thinking in particular about work that I've done over the years with colleges and universities, the college and university presidents and leaders around their governments. Um I have a depth and breadth of understanding of how complex and large institutions are led um through work that I've done um with a range of different colleges and universities around the country. I I will say that um I I have a reputation for being a good listener. Uh I also contribute as a leadership coach, which means I've trained in how to be a good listener. Um and so I think I too have some strengths and some values to bring in terms of um being good at synthesizing information from a different, from multiple sources, engaging with diverse perspectives, listening closely to the range. Okay, my time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. Um all right, now we're going to move on to uh pre-submitted questions for each candidate. Uh we will have one or two questions to respond to. We're going to alternate in terms of who will answer the question. Um so that will be first. Um the question is helping me leverage technology, lessons learned, uh related to remote learning over the last several years to improve our schools.
Leveraging technology. Well, I think one lesson learned from the pandemic is that virtual instruction is superior. We just should not use that unless it is a last resort and all that is available for the general student body. I understand there are some families that are still opting for virtual learning. Um around a hundred, I believe, that um for various reasons want virtual learning. They are currently in the Virginia program, the state program. And I think that's appropriate. I don't think that Arlington Public Schools should try to recreate the option of virtual learning. If if there's a crisis or emergency, um okay, that's uh I think our charge is to provide good in-person instruction. And that's what we should focus our resources and our attention on as a school board.
So I have um a couple of different ways of thinking about this. I really think that we can leverage the use of technology in valuable ways. Um certainly to have efficiencies in our system overall in terms of how we operate and to cut costs in ways that uh that you can have efficiencies with using technology. Um but in terms of the the academic side of things, I think um I'm thinking about a couple of things. One, being really mindful about the use of technology with younger children and the amount of time that they are spending potentially on screens. Um and then with all kids all the way through the system, making sure that we have a range of the ways that they spend their time. So my kids who are currently in middle school and high school, they still do math with paper and pencil on worksheets. And I think they should, and they all should also should know how to use an Excel spreadsheet to do math calculations, right? So there's sort of a range of things that I think we should have a balance. I think the thing that has been um brought to a lot of people's attention and brought to the forefront also has to do about uh mindfulness about privacy for kids and what they're engaged in with online, what the apps are that they're using. I think there's a lot of ways that that teachers and the school system can use the apps productively to evaluate where kids are. But we also want to be very mindful about um the privacy issues related to technology. Thanks.
All right. Um second question, um Bethany, what took you first? Uh uh how do you think collective bargaining for school employees will impact Arlington Public Schools?
So, thank you. I'm really excited uh to see Arlington bringing collective, collective bargaining in for teachers and staff. Um the county has set a really nice precedent with this um and have our history of years, we're going to have a big head of the school system in this regard. Um I think that it's incredibly valuable for teachers and staff members to have a strong voice and to have dedicated ways that they can advocate for their needs, can communicate uh with the system and have um in a sense, a community of resources and people that they can turn to. Um when you have a union environment, you have sort of those built-in avenues to um get help, get assistance, ask a question, figure out whether or not something needs to be addressed, understand what your rights are, understand what, how you can advocate for your needs. Um so I'm excited to see this unfold. I think there's a lot of work ahead uh for the school board in this regard. Um but I think that uh things are on a good, a good trajectory in Arlington with collective bargaining.
Yes, collective bargaining, since it is new to Arlington Public Schools, I I want to say we will see. I am interested, I'm very opening to see if this improves the um climate for teachers in our school and helps us retain them. Um I understand the teachers' union would like to see more specific processes in place for the trigger that would decertify the union. Um I I hope that that is not um a sticking point or a a trouble point as we go forward. Um but ultimately, I what I want to see is that we are retaining good teachers, that they are uh feeling that they're doing rewarding work, um that they're gratified where their work is paid fairly. I'd like to see our teachers be able to afford to live in Arlington if they choose. Um I've I've met a lot of teachers that would love to live in Arlington and they don't feel the. So I I guess I'm waiting to see the proof in the pudding of what our collective bargaining will do and do it improve our ability to retain excellent teachers and improve the education that our children are getting. That's and that's the ultimate end point of what we do in APS.
Thank you. Um moving on to the third question, uh tell us about a specific instance when you feel you weren't able to make a difference in a student or a young person's life.
Go first on this. Um. There's so, there's so many. Um as a psychiatrist, I of course can't talk about patients. But um I am a choir director. And uh I've directed choirs of adults and children. And uh it is an educational endeavor. It involves a lot of planning, coaching, uh listening and bringing together people with different needs into a unified activity, a unified project. And uh it it just uh really speaks to me when I had heard children one or two years after we had worked on particular music to hear them, still singing this and knowing that I got through to them and they have carried that beautiful music that we've learned with them and you know, really deep long-term memory. Um you know, I take great care that the music that uh that I teach has uh good truths and valuable material for them to learn. Uh just to see the retention, see what I have taught be retained um years later. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad I got to be second. How much? So, you know, I want to talk for a minute about um about the food pantry that I run. Um because we've had an incredible impact on a a large number of kids and their families in that work. And one of the things that we did during sort of during the heart of the pandemic, so in the twenty, starting March twenty twenty for that first seventeen months, uh we ran the food pantry weekly. And we served an average of a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty families per week. And we saw the same families. So they all had to be families that had kids that were at at the elementary school or in the school. And what we did was we made it about more than just coming and picking up groceries. Um we sort of had a a one-stop shop model. So the principal would be there, it's Friday afternoon, the principal would be there to get, answer questions that families had. The librarians would be there. The kids could check out books during the week, and the librarians would have those books ready for them to pick up on Friday when they came to the pantry. The information technology coordinator for the school, she would be there. So they could show up with their iPads that hadn't been working for the past day or two, or however many days that week, and get their iPads fixed. And we did, we did a whole range of additional things, like providing information about brand beliefs, about providing information about COVID vaccinations.
All right, uh in our last pre-submitted question, uh what consequences should be faced by the students who set off fireworks at Washington Library High School earlier this year? Bethany, you're first.
What consequences should be faced by the students who set off the fireworks? Um, I mean, I I I want to give a five-second answer and say, well, whatever, whatever the law says they should face. Um look, we, you know, there was this, there was a school work session last night on um school climate and and around sort of student behavior and this two code of conduct. Um and one of the things that I thought was really valuable in that conversation was the extent to which, so they had a whole students there, the extent to which those students understand or don't understand what their rights and responsibilities are. If you break the rules, do you understand what's going to happen for you? Does your family understand? Do your parents know that there is a student code of conduct? Have they looked at it? Have you looked at it? And so part of the conversation last night in the work session was really around that piece of do students understand the implications of their actions? Do they understand what might happen? And then there was a lot uh around sort of, could we move to a model of restorative justice that's a little bit less about who's guilty and what are they guilty of, and how are we going to punish them? And more towards a model of like, hey, what's going on with these kids? Where are they sort of emotionally, developmentally? What do they understand about sort of the implications of what they've done? So.
Thank you for going first, Bethany. I I I want to say first in earnest that the school board does not discuss disciplinary honors publicly and um I will avoid being too specific, just as Bethany did. But um one thing, I I do believe that there should always be negative consequences for misconduct and um I do believe that uh personal restoration practices can be helpful um as a supplement to disciplinary procedures, if all of the parties willing, that would be important for restorative justice uh type methods, that that all parties need to be willing to assist to that. But I would say that should supplement um the disciplinary procedures that do ultimately need to end in some kind of negative consequences. Um I think that is going to be an important feature of restoring our school climate, uh discipline and order, uh a peaceful climate where students feel safe and are safe physically. So that's what I was saying.
Great, thank you. Uh I think we have time for one or two uh great questions from the audience. Um the first of which is a great deal of research has shown a harmful impact on police schools, especially for students of color. How will you work to end this school-to-prison pipeline in Arlington?
Well, I don't think that that was happening in Arlington. The Arlington, uh we used to, were in Arlington schools, were um generally loved by the kids. Every demographic group in Arlington's own research um felt safer with the police in the schools. Um every racial group, economic group, parents, children, elementary, high school. Um I think they were an asset, and I think it was misguided to uh end that program. I want to bring them back. It's going to be hard because they haven't moved on to other places where uh they can work with kids like they're trained to. Um the the idea of a pipeline, the numbers are just not there in Arlington. The numbers are very low. Um the Arlington County Police Department's public data, the numbers are so low that they can't actually even reveal the exact numbers because it would inadvertently identify a student by the demographic information. So if you look at their public data, you'll just see asterisks that um the data cannot be shared publicly because it would identify students. So um I I. So, um, I, I don't think that is a, an actual problem and I want to bring the resource officers back to Arlington Public Schools.
So I feel very strongly that we should not have police officers in our schools. I don't know what survey results, uh, that they'll reverse to about how people in Arlington feel, but there is extensive research that demonstrates that schools are not inherently the same due to the presence of SROs. Further, it's documented in multiple studies that there are disproportionately negative impacts for students of color related to the presence of officers in schools and there's data in Arlington that would support that. Twenty twenty-one study published by the American Medical Association looking at danger for school shootings between nineteen eighty and twenty nineteen showed no association between having an armed officer and deterrence of violence. Another twenty twenty-one study by researchers at the University of Albany had found that SROs do effectively reduce some forms of violence in schools but do not prevent school shootings or gun-related incidents. What's a great concern for anyone concerned with equitable outcomes for students is that study also found that SROs intensified the use of suspensions, expulsions, police referrals and arrests of students. These effects were consistently over two times larger for black students than white students. The study also found that SROs increase chronic absenteeism, particularly for students with disabilities. I could go on and on and I will not, my voice is shaking, I feel very strong. There is a prison, I, I want, it does exist, you want to. Thank you. I hope that, and I'm going to be very brief. I hope that my values are clear. I am an active community leader. I care about our kids. I care about quality in our schools. I care about the social and emotional and mental health of our students. I care tremendously that there are students who do not have the same kind of ac- academic outcomes as their peers and they face different kinds of behavioral consequences than their peers. It would be my great pleasure to serve this school board and I hope that I have the breadth and depth of experience to be effective in that role. Thank you.
Just briefly, the study I was referring to was the twenty twenty panorama study by Arlington Public Schools. And if you go to the ACTD website and go to the data section, you will see the blinded data that I referred to. I love Arlington County and Arlington schools and I'm eager to work with the school board members. They could be so much more effective if they had someone, just one person from outside their circle. We could all have more confidence in the governing process. I will make sure dissenting viewpoints and concerns are truly brought to the table. I am the candidate who will work for teachers and every student and all of our citizens. I am your candidate and I respectfully ask for your vote.
Thank you very much that we're using our school board meeting.
Yeah, we could have a county board candidates as we rearrange the chairs here. I've got a couple of announcements. First of all, for those here at the Lowerland Community Center, we have a lot of food and maybe some drinks back that we don't want to have to throw that away. So, uh, if you want to take a break now and come back and take some food and refreshments. Secondly, um, I wanted to take this commercial break and ask for your support for the Arlington Committee One Hundred, um, which is sponsoring tonight's program. Uh, you can support the Arlington Committee One Hundred in a number of ways. Um, one of which is to be a member of our organization. That's correct. We still are a member organization. We depend on donations from our members to finance our operations. Um, our costs will be going out if we can get back to hybrid and in-person programming. Um, if you believe, our mission is to address community issues in a nonpartisan, community-wide way. And, uh, we, and gathering community members together to meet one another and talk about these issues in a civil way. Believe in our mission. Uh, please become or become a member by making a donation to the Arlington Committee of Committee One Hundred. Uh, you're considered a member if you donate any time during our fiscal year, which began on July the first and ends next June thirtieth. Please see the chat, if you're, uh, listening online, see the chat box for a link to become a member, which should be posted very shortly, uh, or you can, uh, send us a check at the, uh, address that appears on the slide up here and should be on your screens at home. You can also send us a check at the postal address, which is on the screen and on your, on the screen here and it's also can be found on our websites. Uh, we're also looking for support, uh, with volunteers. You can visit our website and there's a form there to volunteer under the Get Involved tab. Uh, and the chat, you should be seeing it, if you're online, you should be seeing a, a link in the chat box to our volunteer form on the website. Uh, like many organizations, we've lost volunteer infrastructure during the pandemic. So we're especially looking for, uh, people, for volunteers with event planning skills and in-person programming, uh, which has been actually become more challenging because of the pandemic. Uh, the technology involved is much more complicated than it seems to be. I also want to take this opportunity, make a plug, to make a plug for our member program. Uh, that's the, uh, we're going to be, uh, our program will be on November ninth, starting at seven o'clock. Uh, we, at that program, we plan to have experts address how the Arlington County Government's staff proposal on missing middle housing affects schools and seniors. Uh, we always try at the committee of one hundred to provide, uh, new programming or you can't go where you can't get anyplace else. So we're focusing on, uh, schools and seniors and missing housing next month. You'll be able to join us online. We're not going to have that for that program in person. It'll be on Zoom online completely like we've been doing since March of twenty twenty. Uh, you'll soon be, uh, we'll soon have registration forms on our website then. Uh, for those who registered for tonight's program or, or on our email list, we'll be sending our links to register for that November, um, ninth program. Uh, now to the reason everybody's here tonight, the, uh, second of our candidate forums. We're pleased to have the three candidates for the one Arlington County Board seat that will be on the ballot on November eighth. Uh, we have Audrey Clennell, who's running as an independent, Matt DeFranti, who's the candidate in the Democratic Party, and Adam Theo, who's running as an independent. I'll let them introduce themselves during their presentations. Uh, the ground rules for this forum will be the same as the ground rules that apply to the school board candidate forum, uh, which I explained before that forum. Uh, Theo Armus, the Washington Post Local Politics Reporter for Arlington and Alexandria, who I introduced before the previous forum, will again be our moderator. Take a wait again, fail.
Right, um, thank you very much. So to start things off, I would have a fun, interactive, uh, live element in which I will be selected in order, which I'm going to answer. All right, um, first is Matt. Second, uh, is Theo and Audrey. Like very conveniently, you're sitting in that order. All right, uh, so again, we're going to shut up and open Stevens, um, each have two minutes.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to join you today. Since I came before the committee one hundred four years ago, I've gotten married, moved from courthouse to Rock, to the Rock Spring neighborhood. For those who don't know my background, my career includes experiences as a teacher of order and advocate for economic, educational opportunity, feeding America, habitat for the community, and teacher for America are organizations that I worked through and that have evolved. I served as chair. I've also, over the last four years, worked my heart out to serve on, I served as chair during the middle of COVID, successfully advocating for additional vaccines and helping Arlington to one of the highest vaccination rates in Virginia. I've been a champion for our environment, working relentlessly since July, I think, two thousand nineteen to address stormwater issues, pushing so that we would do as much as we can in each of the different waterways to try and address those issues. I secured an extra one hundred thousand in this year's budget to update the tree candy study and I have been focused, like others, on community and, and climate change. On affordable housing, I know this is an issue, committee one hundred is focused on numerous times. I led the board when we preserved over thirteen hundred affordable homes at the Barrow Park Apartments. On education, and I hope we talk concretely about the budget. I increased funding for our schools this past year to raise teacher salaries for homeless teachers, to fare backs and other locals. We also needed to attract good new ones. On our economy, I supported the partnership to bring Amazon to Crystal City. Not because I think Amazon is perfect, but I think evidence now is very overwhelming that Amazon has helped steady and strengthen our economy over the last two years, four years. On hunger, I started a food security task force. I'm honored to have the support of delegate Patrick Ho. I'm proud of what I've done and determined to keep working on that. I hope I can earn your vote, your support and your vote on November, uh, going forward.
Thank you everyone for joining us and this is wonderful autumn evening. I'm honored to be here and thank you to the Arlington Committee of One Hundred for hosting this excellent opportunity. As vice president to be Walton Berkeley Square Civic Association, a voting delegate to the Arlington County Civic Federation and co-founder of the Grassroots Housing Advocacy Group in East Atlanta, Virginia, I work for Arlington's future prosperity. I'm a veteran of the Air Force Reserves as a structural civil engineer with a deployment to Afghanistan. Before moving on to ten years ago, I've been homeless twice, including during D.C. snowing in winter thirteen years ago. I've lived both sides of law enforcement, not only as a communications consultant that worked alongside the least known law enforcement role since the day but also incarcerated back down in county jail in Florida after some troubled teenage years. Is these experiences unlike any other county ward member that it may be the strong-willed and optimistic person that I am, fighting for Arlington's future prosperity and security? But enough about me. It's Arlington that's the most important topic after all. We deserve an Arlington that is safe, affordable, and accountable. Prioritize public safety, particularly with our poor living status. We need to end the housing crisis with an all-inclusive approach that includes missing middle housing. And we need to bring true accountability and reform on our operations. A personal background and vision for our future are not the only way, expect to refer my moments. You also have a choice of your style and attitude. Mr. Dave Bronte takes the same political route of meeting by not meeting, sticking to a fifty percent solution on every issue supposed to not upset the status quo or alienate donors. This moment is riding the wave of angry, reactionary capitalists with claims of media bias. Last two minutes. All right, thank you. To get to the recent part.
Thank you for inviting me to this forum. I'm on ring eleven. If you've been a key to the Arlington County Board. As an eighteen-year Westover resident, longtime civic activist and fast member of transportation commission, I'm running for county board because it's pretty harmful policies resulting in overcrowded schools, gentrification, loss of green space, and excessive taxation. Now, the county is pushing missing middle upsony, multi-family dwellings in single-family home neighborhoods. Compared to what the county says, missing middle will not make housing more affordable. Instead, it will make more unaffordable housing by inflating land values resulting in higher housing prices, overcrowded schools, more traffic congestion, loss of tree candy, increased runoff, and more air pollution. Let's face it, the only benefits here is of missing middle are developers who are already making the killing flipping properties in your neighborhood. Another issue that concerns me is tax gouging. On April twenty-ninth, we're adopted a one point five million dollar budget that includes a five point three percent effective real estate tax rate increase. Nothing new here. In fact, between twenty twelve and twenty twenty-one, Arlington's ten-year average annual effective real estate tax rate increase was double the rate of inflation. Are lease over the top annual tax rate increases actually needed to fund the budget? I don't think so. If elected, I pledge to seek immediate tax relief for residents and businesses, saying yes to affordable housing and no to missing middle upsony. If you share my agenda and spread the word about my candidacy, donate to my campaign and help make the Arlington way more than an empty phrase.
All right, uh, thank you, uh, for that. Now we're going to, uh, move on. Candidates for going to have an opportunity to ask a question of their fellow candidates. Um, you can start with, uh, and you will answer, I'll treat them.
Thank you, certainly.
Um, we get a chance to ask each a question or one of them. Uh, you, you can ask both, uh, or sure. And you have, uh, one of the stats and one of the.
Sure. So the question is, um, uh, Theo, you talked a lot about public safety and you just referred to that, to it in this conversation, that's including street safety. But you've also referred to it as investing in, uh, our public safety entities, ACB, uh, shares and, uh, file. And I wonder, having a look at this, among other things, I wonder how you respond, this past year we did more than ten percent raise for our police officers and significant raises for our other two main public safety branches. We thought that was a wise move to invest with losing public safety individuals. Um, would you have supported that? How would you swear that or some of the efforts to, uh, you described to reduce, uh, spending overall?
Sure, I have an answer. In short, I think they are police or firefighters, are, are first responders and emergency vendors and rescue teams, including dispatch. That's a, a lot of their votes part of first response is the people back in the call centers handling those calls. All of those deserve more pay. We want those people to be able to go forward to stay in here in Arlington at ten percent raise and whatever it takes to be able to match the surrounding jurisdictions is desperately needed. Fairbanks is aggressive on this. We are not. Public safety isn't just about law enforcement and first responders. It's also about mental health and substance abuse treatment, which we are, are globally inadequate on still, even with recent developments to improve and stand our, I guess, beds, for lack of a better word, for mental health and substance abuse treatment. We're still only about a third of the way to where we really need to be. And all of the treatment centers that we have now, all of them are geared towards adults. Nobody yet, yes, that is a tragedy. Public safety isn't just about roads as well with our fatalities and injuries that seem to be happening on an hour weekly basis. It is also, uh, some police, uh, reform issues and criminal justice reform to help our police sort of offload things that they don't need to be responsible for. Traffic, parking in particular, which is being done, but we need to speed that along. And as well as other issues to help hand off patients who are suffering from mental health issues to hospitals and clinics and specialized care centers. Now, how do I swear that? Thank you.
Do I answer this question?
Yes, yeah. So the, just to clarify, there's a question that you can, we can ask, we've directed at both of them.
Okay. Well, as I understand it, Matt's question is, uh, we increased police salaries by thirteen percent this year. How do you swear that with your urge or desire for fiscal restraint? Well, I think the answer is transparent. That thirteen percent increase, if it was necessary, okay, if it was truly necessary to retain, uh, critical staff, it was necessary because the police force was demoralized. That's why all these guys are leaving. I mean, I read articles in Marla about the demoralization of the Arlington police force and these people were demoralized because of the demand for the police movement, which I absolutely oppose. Now, I credit Arlington County with, with not being in the forefront of that movement, but on the other hand, they did not take a leadership role. They did not say, as Del Reeve said, Arlington ain't tough like. Even the incident that occurred, um, with Trump. Even the incident that occurred with Trump in front of the White House at the beginning of the twenty twenty protests, where Arlington police participated as part of an area wide agreement. These guys were acting under orders of the Washington DC police. They were not responsible for the concentration that occurred. And in fact, and I do credit Arlington County Government, the county manager after that. Okay.
And now I ask a question. Yeah, sorry. Just to be clear, this question is directed at both of you. Sure. All right. So missing mill housing reform is the big topic this year, isn't it? And I myself fully, full disclosure there, I'm very much for it. It's desperately needed for our continued future and prosperity. My question for my opponents is, Matt, you have come out and opposed the eight-plex, the garden condos and apartments that are within the most affordable options for people. And Audrey, she wants none of this opposed to all of it. Here's my question. Can the two of you, say, two or three years after missing mill, fingers crossed, has passed, and the first batch of housing is rolling on the market that are townhomes and six-plexes, eight-plexes? Can you walk across your street to greet these new neighbors, these new members of our community and say, hey, you in the eight-plex, you in the townhouse, just so you know, I didn't want you here. I didn't want you to have this beautiful home that you loved and cherish now. I think that you are renters that don't deserve to be able to be in my neighborhood or people that will have, that will be a burden on our community, on our infrastructure. And this child that you're now pushing out on the stroller, that'll be a burden on our schools. Can you do that for me in, say, two or three years after missing mill has passed, can you face those people on the way by and tell them what you are advocating for right now or not? No, so give me a second. Yeah.
I absolutely will greet everyone with the same spirit that was, that we all relearned. As we learned about the extraordinary life of Mr. Raj, once you be my neighbor, it's the spirit that will reign. That's for sure what we'll be looking to next door, all of our neighbors. The question for me is about strategy of how best to serve some of those needs. I think that six and B pluses are going to be one bed and one bath. I think that our transit-oriented development is the best way to meet that supply need. We have to continue doing investments in our corridors, but I think that that's, that's the reason why I'm starting this way. And I think listening to our entire community to reach a balanced proposal that moves us forward on this hundred years of a barrier to allowing for duplexes and triplexes, while also looking towards quads on our largest plots. That's the right way forward. And I, you know, you mentioned renters. I have zero bias. All of our programs, our Affordable Housing Investment Fund, our Housing Grants Program, all of our fiscal investment is in, in to renters as they're most in need, and it should continue to be. And we need to increase that because we do that. Twenty-five thousand people about who are under thirty-five thousand dollars a year for their household. So for sure, I'll greet them with pleasure, and I'm looking forward to that. And I won't vote for anything that I wouldn't want next door to myself.
Well, first of all, if missing mill is adopted, I will buy my own. So speak, and it is inconsistent with the violations by the laws against civil one state per se. Secondly, I'm not hostile to the people who move in, and I'm not hostile to the people who move out. I'm hostile to the developers who plan to make the killing on the rest. Okay, so if there were to be any hostile confrontations, it would not be between me and renters who are homeowners. It would be between me and ruthless greed outside, outside the state investment bottom mark. So that's point number one. Point number two, I do not oppose upzoning across the board. I oppose upzoning across the county. There are certain trends, on Matt's point, there are certain transit corridors in which I think multiplexes are appropriate. In fact, I live in an eight-plex on Washington Boulevard in a transit quarter. I can see a pilot program that resumes a section of Langston Boulevard quarter for multiplexes. And because it is a transit, it is a major transit quarter, I can see doing that happily and without any hostility at all.
All right. So now it's your turn to.
All right. Okay. So this question goes to both parties or both my colleagues. Of the sixty-one thousand dollars in March donations that Matt received in twenty twenty-two, eighty percent has come from one venture capitalist from outside the county and from unions that are based outside the county. I know that there is no limit on amounts or sources of handmade funds in Virginia. But do you agree that this disproportionate amount of money from outside the county is improper?
So to your question, I, I play by the rules and I check out each and every donor. I make no promises. I just last week returned a thousand dollars because it was contributing through an act of movement. And I returned it because I thought I did some investigation online and I thought that that person might be associated with a developer. I don't take a dollar or a dime to developers. I've also received two hundred and forty-eight contributions of less than a hundred dollars. And I'm, I think it's part of building a strong campaign to ask people for support. I never made a promise to any entity that donates. And I think some of the donation was through Teach for America. And I think that has good goals and it's an organization that is reputable. So I think the integrity is there. I think that the, all the other contributions from unions, no promises. It is, I share the ideas and I'm committed to working to help working people move ahead in Arlington. And so that's why asking, building a campaign is about asking for people for their support. And I look at it as an investment in the ideas. And that's why I think it's not.
Campaign finance is a tricky journey issue, right? It's the gateway to corruption. I can't speak on Matt's campaign and how he funds it. I can only talk about. I have not accepted a single dollar from any organization, corporate, nonprofit, labor community, so I am one hundred percent individually funded. And the vast majority of my donations, the least of the ten thousand dollars so far, has been in small dollar donations. I, I think my highest donor this year is one thousand, is one thousand dollars. Everything else, ten bucks, thirty bucks, ninety-nine dollars. And that ninety-nine dollars is a specific, by the way, because it is just under the threshold for public reporting and allowing donors to remain private. Now, I do this because most of my donors, most of my supporters are Democrats. And they don't want to be placed with a target on their back by the local party. So that is coming very useful. I hope that answers your question. All right. Now we're going to move on to some questions that came from the committee hundred. Great. And Theo is just pushing first then Audrey. What can Arlington do to navigate the reduced for office space and the loss of revenue that that has generated? And we know what twenty, twenty-one percent office vacancy rate this year, just before the pandemic. We were chipping away at that, starting to get this back to an unimaginable number. But of course, floating came along for the whole time. There's talk of office to residential conversions. And while that is useful, it is not a silver bullet for our housing affordability crisis. It can be done in some cases, but not as a blanket concern, not as a silver bullet. What I really want to do for our office vacancy is use it for schools. After all, we have a school overcrowding crisis. And using office space for schools doesn't suffer near the same hurdles and problems that does work converting to residential plumbing and electrical and interior space. So let's, let's hope A P S can create it with our schools in the future. Instead of being set in this mindset of these suburban campuses that take up acres and acres, let's go small, let's go mini, and have our elementary, middle, and high schools spread throughout our corridors where the vacant office spaces.
Well, this is an issue upon which I agree with this Theo almost done and was. Now, okay, now, but it, on the half of office to residential conversion, I want to quote Dr. Hiwomar, who is a local economist. He recently issued a press release where he says, "Office to residential or O two R addresses Arlington's ridiculously high office vacancy rate, now hovering at twenty-four percent, whom assignment will obey." This is a time as higher than what industry thinks is good. O two R would preserve the currently cooler parts of Arlington instead of creating heat islands that worsen air pollution, increase nervous stress, et cetera. O two R could be accomplished with less drastic regulation than upzoning. O two R would avoid the risk of establishing zoning rights that could not be rescinded in the future. O two R invites reuse and recycle philosophy, adding an office building for residential use may produce less waste, takes less time, and is less costly than building new. O two R may lead to more important units because refitting a building usually costs less than starting new. O two R enables conversion of the hardscape that often surrounds burning property. O two R will locate housing near and prevent it than the residential land and.
The office market has changed completely. The pandemic has shifted and we are fifty percent working from home. We have to recognize that and we have to think market by market. I think that the national lane in Crystal City, Pentagon City market is on a good trajectory. There's significant number of residential units in addition to, to Amazon coming online. I'm not worried about the short, medium, long-term economic prospects for that market. The same is actually true about Roslin. Think that big picture, we're okay. We do have some work to do there. It's, and we also have the George Mason additional campus that's going in to help Virginia Square and Clarence. It's Boston where I'm most concerned. We have a very old, an older sector plan in Boston. And we need to address some of the large vacancies that are in that market. We're going to have to think about, I think, ground floor allows some flexibility with respect to retail. And as you go up, we're going to have to think about different uses. But I don't think office to residential is going to work in every case because the, the building structures don't actually allow you to be able to convert to apartments. So I don't think it's the silver bullet. We're going to have to work at this steadily with business retention. And we're going to have to be smart, like we were smart about the Amazon Performance Agreement. We've spent zero dollars out of Arlington's coffers. And they have contributed to the community high school, fifty million in affordable housing investment funds. And on top of that, that comes up in three hundred million.
All right. Moving on to the next question, I know the name, that one. Audrey relates this first, then Matt fifty. How could the total process for county board members be improved?
Well, as you know, Arlington is, has been authorized by a state legislature legislation, I believe, sponsored by Patrick Hope, who is here tonight, to conduct instant runoff voting, which I absolutely support. I will call it a silver bullet. It will not necessarily bring multi-party government back to Arlington County. But it will enable, it will enable the government to get a better gauge of voter preferences. And that is critical to democracy. In other words, the first step to democracy is clearly establishing voter preferences. Under the first pass post system, it is impossible to do that because people, the vast majority invariably vote where despite their preferences. So I support instant runoff voting. Now, I understand that to be technical reasons, it has not been implemented in Arlington County. I further understand in the register, the only fit and efficient way to do that is through the state. I mean, presumably, the state would provide the software for localities across the state to conduct such elections. I don't know if that's true. I am concerned about the unaccountable delay because other states in the union have implemented ranked choice voting statewide.
A couple of different levels. First, instant runoff voting is currently, there's a comment period. It's under consideration. And I support it for primaries next year. So that is progress. What Audrey was referring to is that there is, there was a cost of multimillion dollars for some updates were made with the state. Now have that, those updates so we can move forward with it in primaries. I think that's the right way of pilot. There are other reforms to our government that I think are, that the Tiger Group of the City Fed with board talked about with some stakeholders, and I think it's worth taking a longer look. I do think it's a fair critique to say the balance between the staff and the county board takes consistent work. Under our chapter of local government, we hire and fire the county manager. We need to make sure we're holding him accountable in ways short of firing. And that is a balance that needs to be reworked. And I think some of the structural ways we can work on it are mentioned by the Tiger Group. Lastly, I would say that with respect to school caucuses, I am not one who believes that nonpartisanship in school boards is the answer. I do, however, believe that we need to do everything we can to increase participation. Until Virginia changes the law, which is not coming in the next four years to allow for primaries, school boards, I think we need to make sure that we're expanding participation as much as possible. I do think the ideas at the national level of the Democratic Party are completely different from those of the Republican Party.
In short, this boils down to what was mentioned just now, this event's tiger team. It was a task force, or it is a task force, that has been put together by the Civic Federation. And over the past year or more, they've come up with some excellent recommendations, which they are itemizing and polishing off. Our very own John Wyssett is a part of that. So feel free to go to him after this and dig his brain out, sitting there. The tiger team has come up with a number of recommendations so far, such as branch choice voting, expanding the county or school board of a set of numbers, and other reforms, such as tiering, staggering, different from what we have now. In my opinion, what the tiger team has come up with is excellent. I, it's almost as if like what I had been thinking about for years was put on paper. So two thumbs up for that. It isn't just about this event's tiger team, however. It's also about our county auditor's office. Again, it's from time back into John Wyssett, something you can preach for in high near years ago, but has been chronically left underfunded. There's been a little bit of improvement to the past year, including additional staff members for the county auditor's office, but still nothing to what we need. Transparency is the key to opening up our county and making sure that it really works for the people. Branch choice voting, I'll circle back that a little bit. I'm a big fan of branch choice voting as a local election reform here involved. It would do wonders and thank you. All right. Moving on to the next question. How will you support or represent Arlington's diverse military community? We will do straight up in the line for this.
It's a good question. I talked with Joe Simonelli last week. He is our lead for our county manager appointing committee on this. And he has been working to try and get better data so that you can stay in touch with our military community. We do have a large population, of course, veterans, and also currently serving individuals. So his, his goal is to build an email list and there's procedural and resource-based challenges to build that list so that we can be in touch. In the service branches, you have a birthday, you usually get a happy birthday. These are small but important touches that I think can make a real difference. So working more closely with Joe over the coming years is important. I think it was right to take the step to, to the tax reduction step for those who are a hundred percent disabled. I also think it's important, the little things can make a big difference of recognizing. Um I also think it's important, um the little things can make a big difference of recognizing uh our US Army band that participates quite often. Uh we also need to think about community health. Um because there are instances where help at the DC veterans is not as strong as help here. So I think a community health center in neighborhoods most need is a wise step we should look at with the coming years.
So I mentioned in my intro, I'm a veteran. And surprisingly, the I'd be the only veteran on the county board and the only veterans who uh have run recently, which is surprising for a community so heavy in its military members. And we could do an email list where we congratulate and thank uh service members on their birthday. That's something I suppose. But really, what we need to do is focus on mental health. Something I don't talk about much on the campaign trail because it's kind of a tailor. But deployed to Afghanistan years ago. And I felt when I came back, I I suffer from some serious mental health issues, even more on my side. It's our mental health that we need to improve on to help our service members, our veterans. That's where our entire country, in particular even Arlington County suffers. Do everything we can to help our veterans as they come back from military service, as they age, as they deal with civilian lives that is different from the military life they spent years on.
Well, first of all, uh I strongly support uh the effort, the uh the Pentagon's effort in support of people in Ukraine. Uh this is an existential fight. Uh it does involve the national security because when uh Ukraine falls, it will be another chance for Latvia. So I understand that and therefore I fully support uh the administration's efforts uh to supply uh Ukraine with necessary military advice and uh material. Uh however, we signed in nineteen ninety four uh basically a that bilateral treaty uh with Ukraine known as the Budapest Memorandum. And because of that, I feel that we should, we should, could and should have done more early on. As a result of the fact that we haven't, uh look, for uh large swaths of Ukraine have been urgently destroyed. Now, that's not the end, that is not the end of the uh of the matter. The war will end and a rebuilding effort will begin. And I think Arlington could be in the forefront of that effort by offering some of its architectural expertise there rather than here. In other words, there could be some kind of coordinated effort among the developers in northern Virginia.
Thank you. Um all right, moving on. Uh in your view, how would an empty missing middle affect existing neighborhood culture and personality? Um we start with you over this one and then Audrey and then Matt. So one of your fears about missing middle, how it will change our neighborhoods, our communities. Here's the sort of a brutal honest answer for you. Our communities, our neighborhoods, they need to be able to change, to grow, to evolve. It's a sentimental thing for all of us. I mean, we're human, that's the human quality, to want to hold on to something as we know it in its point in time. But allowing our streets, our neighbors, even the types of housing that we grown used to, that we bought into, to slowly change and evolve over the decades is what makes us Arlington honest. We're different now than we were twenty years ago, forty years ago, a hundred years ago. Let's allow that process to continue. We'll be better off for it and future Arlington residents will beg us for it.
Well, I want to debunk some myths about missing middle. Uh the first myth is that missing middle will redress racial inequities by providing affordable housing. Not so. According to County Zone data, a household must earn at least a a hundred thousand a year to qualify for the smallest one-bedroom unit in an A plus. Uh yeah, also, the County Zone data indicates that line of Latino median income is just a fraction of that. Myth two, missing middle will provide more home buying opportunities for people who can afford it. Not so. The county projects that ninety percent of moving units built will be one to two bedroomed than humans that are already in good supply. Not the three-bedroom units that are needed and eighty percent of those will be grounds not owner occupied. Myth three, only twenty months a year will be missing middle converted. So the impacts will be negligible. Doubt. The county has refused to show where it got this number. But the impacts of missing middle on schools, parking, traffic, runoff and tree canopy could be enormous. The flipping of properties by outstate investors will inflate land values and real estate assessments, displacing moderate income residents and leaving the rest with a huge tax burden. Myth four, tree canopy at twenty to fifty percent is achievable. Not so. According to the Arlington Tree Action Group, the tree canopy replacement requirement will be slashed and halved.
They tend to hear that as a. Uh it's a good question about culture and neighborhood, neighborhood texture. Um I think of this neighborhood goes right back, Arlington Forest. And there, as I walk the streets of this neighborhood, there's a lot of uh smallish um and some additions, red red homes that have been added on to. Uh it is important to evolve, but telling a neighborhood that they must change does not seem likely to me for me to be successful. That's why I don't support A pluses and I do support D pluses. If you can build a forty seven hundred to five thousand square foot home on a lot, you should be able to have a duplex in that same size unit. So that your kids, grandkids can have a better chance to buy something new. You think of the last fifteen years, the price of homes has skyrocketed. It's no longer easy or sometimes possible to bet on employees or CHS or, you know, whatever, to buy cars to live. In the future, it because Arlington is more popular than now than Fairfax and outer suburbs. We're still gonna be desirable. We have to make it possible for people, maybe they don't get. It's not easy to get a huge yard, but you still get a chance for the duplex or a triplex on a very large spot type of leaning four classes. Doing that is chancel dense, doing that is bringing key neighborhood character while addressing this huge challenge of the passive work.
All right, uh moving on to some uh questions from the audience that's here today. Um for this next one, I will do to you that uh Audrey, or excuse me, we keep that order. Um we will do Audrey then Matt, you know. Is the missing middle resurfaced a failure completely or intended in order to revisit the issue based on public opposition? How can the public and voters influence the outcome? What is your position? Okay, you repeated any by the first bit. Sure. Uh is the missing middle resurfaced a failure or intended in order to revisit the issue based on public opposition? How can the public and voters influence the outcome?
Well, I think uh based on the uh based on the talling controversy of two thousand fourteen, it was clear that in order to stop that project, uh it was necessary to elect someone who was not uh a member of the majority party. And that was of course Mr. John Vice that. Uh Mr. John Vice that not only uh brought sanity to the consideration of that issue, but many other important issues that followed. And I studied his voting record and I found that though I did not openly or even often agree with him uh with respect to his general support for the board. I I believe that he always gave a much more conscientious and reasoned uh response to the voters uh who approached him. I believe that Mr. Vice that was much more responsive to the voters. And I believe that he was that way because the majority party, in most cases, it doesn't matter whether it's from voting for Democrat because it's solar. And so I believe that in order to stop missing middle, uh we will have to dislet uh one of the members on board. And then if we don't, uh missing middle is a failure completely. Thank you.
No, missing middle is not a failure completely. The what of what is involved is critical. Already, I've taken two ideas to forms and put them into my own. First, A pluses, I heard again and again and again. I listened. This is my thinking, not thinking of all five members of the board. Uh but it is relevant. Also, tax on the annual amount every year are active discussions saying that you have a set number that would be allowed. That is implementation type measure that I think has merits. My own idea is tiered levels of density on small lots, the most we should be ever be able to ask is duplexes. As you get to the largest lots, four plus, there's some arguments for six plus, but only with a neighborhood conversation and a use permit, in my view. And I still need to refine my thinking on that. That's reflection that this is a live conversation. Voters can absolutely influence the outcome. I think that voters should choose the best person for them on every mission and support that person. I ask to be judged on my own merit. Most people know I am humble. I would listen. I would follow through. You should, if we think about the last four years in pandemic and we think about our record, the record I had with evictions last year, we did a good job on many issues. I'll work that hard for you again. And I think you should choose the best person, not some idea that we have to have a new.
Oh, I'm sorry. No worries. So the short answer is missing middle is not a done deal. Um yes, depending on how the election goes this November, it could very well change. Voters ultimately have that choice of whether they want to destroy the car or go the fifty percent of the road route as Matt does or to actually solve our housing prices. Those are the choices this November. County board members have a responsibility of actually voting on those laws, those warming systems policies. County board members have an even more important responsibility that is of education and leadership. A county board member isn't someone who just simply takes the fifty percent salary in or says no to everything. A county board member is someone that will actually go out into the community, especially the people who are the most opposed to a proposal and take the time to educate, to talk, to listen, to problem solve. That is the greatest responsibility of a county board. Thank you. Um great. Uh for this one, I think we're just gonna go straight down the line. Uh can this go order? Uh would you do anything to better preserve the old growing tree that seems to be disappearing within impful development? Uh such as clear them lots to build new large homes?
So I've worked, I've worked on this. Uh we need an updated tree canopy study to understand exactly where we're losing trees and what the steps we need to take to address this. We also unfortunately, the cold reality is that the state of Virginia has laws that prohibit us from taking some of the steps that we want to take as far as regulating the restrictions. So instead, we're gonna have to incentivize our way to reach some of these goals. I think perspective is important on this. We have to invest in trees, but it's gonna take time. And we also have to change the way processes have worked. Arlington County has worked to push Arlington Public Schools to preserve more trees. We need additional steps. We worked on that in legislature. Get best management practices so the benefits of trees for storm work can be counted better. There's a lot of steps and a lot of work that we need to do. It's also important to understand. Um we've been advocating in Richmond for a change in the law. We've been taking additional steps, but it won't be easy to do this per se. And it is important, just as we love our trees, to understand that in relation to that, there's also our people and our chance to help neighbors in need have a little better chance. And that is a budget-related decision that I believe also needs to be considered in addition to the importance of trees.
So this is where I get an opportunity to educate and push back on fear mongering misinformation. One of the things that's out there about uh against missing middle is talking about this twenty percent requirement that going down to a ten percent requirement. Problem is, those numbers are ultimately irrelevant. The twenty percent is the ten percent requirements. Those are only when a home is first developed and as it's handed over to the family to the future homeowners. After that once, the property owners can cut down every single tree on a lot without any punishment or restriction. And that happens. So like you can drive through Arlington and see, you know, R six, R five, R ten lots with a single tree on it. Our problem in Arlington isn't requirements. That's in fact kind of the problem where we, that's kind of the reason where we find ourselves with this problem. We have this requirement mindset when it comes to our tree canopy. What we need to be doing is switching over to an incentive mindset. Instead of trying to force homeowners, property owners to have a certain number of trees, let's incentivize them to have trees, to plant more trees. Part of that is stuff with stormwater utility that Arlington County is debating and planning right now, which may be able to have a little bit of a credit, uh e-credit for planting trees and adding trees on the properties. Another thing we can do is just cash vouchers, honestly. That's a very simple administrative, low administrative way to incentivize people. Thank you.
Well, I think I'm gonna correct this to Theo on one point. When the county is resurfaced, according to state law, all of the rezoned area will re- will have a reduced tree canopy requirement. It will not be necessary to clip a property in order to reduce number of trees on it. Those, the tree requirement will automatically be cut in that way. Now regarding the county zone efforts, it is recently adopted Community Energy Plan. The county touted the importance of tree canopy to our quality of life. Yet the county's own actions aligns with the dividing principles. Even after adoption of the two thousand nineteen Community Energy Plan or C P P, the county permitted the destruction of an entire grove of majestic hardwoods behind the new Reed School in Westover to accommodate a wheelchair accessible walkway and geothermal infrastructure. In March twenty twenty one, it authorized the destruction of eighty three mature trees on either side of the docks around the cemetery B. A streetbed restoration project using so-called natural channel design techniques. It is currently planning to clear cut on both sides of Gulf Branch as part of a so-called stream residency effort. In most cases, the objective was to promote some other worthy environmental objective. But the outcome will be the opposite, more runoff, erosion and heat island effect and less carbon uptake.
All right, uh uh thank you. And it's uh for all your very detailed answers. And seeing as we're getting close to E P M, uh we're gonna move on to closing statements. Um each user will have one minute. Um and uh we'll sort of review and then on trade. Thank you for having me here. As a straight to the point, common sense, policy, walk, kind of a person. I love telling you the details of the policy we face and the solutions you will need. Please reach out to me at any points. I will definitely make the time to sit down for a coffee with you and talk through any contentious issue that you want to talk about, especially on missing middle. I love the topic. But on this middle, I would spend the best of my time on that. And just uh to help people understand where we are with this, we're read out of this, of the supporters of missing middle. These are the organizations respected in your art community that has come out and supported it. On branch and O A C P, Sierra, Habitat for Humanity, League of Women Voters, Voice, Make the Lines for Climate Solutions, Northern Virginia Affordable Housing Alliance and Land and Presbyterian Church, as well as Mary Cadera on the school board. Arlington County's Division on Aging and Arlington County's Climate Change, Energy and Environment Commission. Thank you.
The choice in this year's county board race is clear. Re-elected incumbent who is going along with the county's missing middle agenda, or elected longtime community activist who has pledged to hold the line against it. Matthew Clonan is a good, good soldier, but now he's in a laundry. Although he wants to go along and get along with his colleagues on board, he's getting static from a lot of people who oppose missing middle. Likewise, Adam Theo Caspi is a fear monger for pointing out the pitfalls of missing middle. But he himself is short on facts about how also we will actually benefit county residents. If you are dissatisfied with the direction of county board, vote climate independent for county board on November eighth. because county board needs more than a rubber stamp, and yes, I have an endorsement of Arlington every morning.
Thank you for the chance to review. I'm proud that this time I have earned the support of Sundas Ed and Mission Sierra Club and Northern Virginia Labor. Phrases like tax gouging. You know, I'll cut taxes immediately, but I still support teachers and police officers. Those don't swear. You know those don't swear. I didn't consider in the pandemic the tax cut because you can't just abstractly say you care about public health and not pay your public service. It doesn't mean through the roof, but collective bargaining and valuing our public service was the right policy choice this past year. Yes, this would concern. Yes, we should not have spent ten million dollars to buy the Rouse property. That, those are the sort of real decisions, real leadership that I'll bring. And I think that it's important to recognize that. Issues like mental health, Mr. Theo rightly points out, we've got to work on it. It's a state problem. It's also a local problem. All work hard on it.
All right, um that wraps us up. Thank you again, everyone, for your questions, and then we'll finish off with Jerry.
I add my thanks to Theo's thanks to candidates who appeared uh this evening and uh also to Theo himself, who did an excellent job as our moderator. You better be careful, you might not have a permanent job. For our future candidate forums. As we wrap up here, um what, stick with us, I want to remind you all that we um save the date for our program for on the schools and seniors aspects of the missing middle housing uh staff proposal on Wednesday uh November ninth. Uh we're going to be offering that program online and Zoom and Facebook Live beginning at seven PM on November the ninth. This will, we will not have a in-person component for that program. We're going back to Zoom only. We'll have to wait, uh next year, we hope to have some more hybrid programs like this one tonight. Uh you'll soon be able to find more information on our November night program on our website. And uh those of us, those of you who are here tonight registered for this program and are on the email list will be getting links to register for the November ninth program. Um we're not going to be sponsoring a December program this year, but we're going to plan to be back online on January eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Probably haven't opened your calendars yet for that, but uh put on January eleventh, I can promise you that uh we'll have a, a good program on that date. We haven't quite decided on the topic, but uh we'll let you know. Um if you want uh to watch a recording of tonight's program, like our Facebook Live and uh if you uh like, like our Facebook page rather, and view Facebook Live, uh consider you sharing the Facebook Live on tonight's program with your friends. Uh if the candidate forums that we had tonight are something that you think they would be interested in. Uh tonight's program will also be recorded and hosted on the Arlington Committee of One Hundred's webpage at ArlingtonCommitteeOfOneHundred.org in the uh near future, where it org, uh volunteer organization. So we can't promise exactly when that will be out, but we hope to get it out. So again, thank you to everyone uh who were spoke tonight, and uh thank you for coming, and uh we hope to see you online on November the ninth.